Welcome to the September seventeenth Fisher City Council meeting. We will not have a swearing in, there's no swearing in today for new officers that was on the agenda. We're going to acknowledge the September mental health recognition. There is a proclamation and Counselor Weingart's going to share that.
Thank you Todd. City of Fishers proclamation, whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resource available to us and our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the US and the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 34, and the fourth leading cause of death among those ages 35 to 54. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we're all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas the City of Fishers encourages all residents to take time to inquire as to well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors to generally convey their appreciation for the existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, or handshake can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Therefore I, not me, but actually therefore Mayor Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and the City of Fishers and all the residents are encouraged to celebrate it. Signed this seventeenth of September 2018.
Thank you. We've had several recently, just in the news locally, some young people choose to take their lives and so just continue this effort. I'm proud of our mayor, our city, fellow council members, and especially our students at HSE and Fishers with stigma-free clubs and they're really trying to get the word out about mental health awareness, so thank you John very much.
Yeah, if I could comment just a brief bit, as I've shared with other people, I had a, unfortunately my sister is deceased, but she suffered throughout her life with bipolar disorder and schizophrenia, and unfortunately I went from a child watching her as she went through various episodes to becoming her guardian for the end of her life unfortunately. And just exactly one of these things I was raised is take the time, a simple phone call, message, or handshake can go a long way. Take that time to really take care of those around you and be a friend and be a good loved one. So I encourage everyone to do that for the month of September, but also for many, many more months to come.
Thank you John. No presentations, and then we'll have the Finance Committee report, Selena?
In Finance Committee this month, we reviewed the CAFER with Umba and BKD. They confirmed for us what awesome job that our controller is doing, Lisa, she's doing her and her team are doing an absolute great job. There are a few things which we do need to work on, and those have been identified and we will be working on those. We also reviewed compensation for the Board of Public Works, it was brought to our attention that we are the only community that doesn't compensate our Board of Public Works, so we're looking at finding an adequate compensation for those people that are on that board. And that's still in review, and we're waiting for information from the Controller's office on that.
Thank you very much.
We're also the only community that doesn't pay our planning commission or BKA.
So...
And the list goes on.
So you have a lot of work Finance Committee, right? A lot of work ahead of you.
Todd, if I may, go ahead.
Well, to clarify a little bit, one of the reasons why we're looking at the Board of Public Works is because they have two meetings a month as opposed to one. Additionally, their study time that they have before the meeting is fairly significant. So it's a greater time commitment.
Yeah, John?
Certainly if you look at other communities out there, we're one of the few communities actually in the entire state that have an outside audit firm, and I'm a CPA, that's my profession, having an outside offer and come in and check our controls and make sure that we're in compliance, and also we're one of the few communities that does a CAFER as well. We received an unqualified opinion. We have a clean opinion with our financial statements. From a financial operational perspective, we're probably the envy of most other communities and not only in the state, but probably in the Midwest. So my compliments to our team in our accounting and finance area, you do a great job Lisa, congratulations with a clean opinion and really appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, we have a motion. Motion by Selena, second by Eric, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item seven, zero, nine, one, seven, one, eight, A.
Council President, while the mayor's coming to the podium, I would like to take a minute to recognize the big block of students back there in the back of the room are part of the HSE Academy of Finance. They are here on their own time doing outside education with their teacher, Ms. Carrie Richardson. We have about 20 students there or so. So thank you for coming and participating in the public hearing on the budget presentation. Would you like to say anything about your program or the students here tonight?
We're just happy to be here. We have a group of 23 juniors that are able to go through an internship process, mentor someone out in the community to learn more practical financial insights. For two years, we'll get to Chicago and New York, some stuff exchange here in the next few years also, so I mean, probably students and the extra work that they do. Proud of the program.
Outstanding. Thank you for being here.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Pressure's on.
Yes.
All right, well Council President Zimmerman and fellow council members, thank you for the opportunity to present. I think this will be my coming close to 10th budget presentation in front of both town and city councils, and it's always a representation of a collective body of work, not just my own by any stretch of the imagination, but I'm so proud of the organization that I get to be a part of and the team that presents this budget. It's not just a singular decision, but multiple decisions that go into really putting the city on sound financial ground. And a few people I want to just say thank you to, first and foremost Lisa Bradford and her team at the Controller's Office did a fantastic this job this year, you know, not only was she undergoing an audit by a third-party professional organization, she's implementing a brand-new financial software system enterprise-wide, and having to deal with my late-night emails about the budget, and she's been able to manage all of those and do an extraordinary job. I also want to thank the department heads who always, every year have made the budget conversation an easy and strategic conversation. We don't play politics, we talk about how best do we meet the needs of our community while being fiscally responsible, and they always rise to the occasion, and I think you will see that in this budget this year. To give you a little example of some of the public conversations that we've had to date, the work on the budget actually started well before this timeline, started back in April and May when we really started to identify and make sure that we understood where our revenue was coming from, whether we had modeled those correctly. We also started working with our departments on what our budget projections and forecasts will be, so they had an expectation of what they should be doing when they presented their departmental budgets to myself and Lisa. Then leading up to that, we actually got into the Finance Committee where I appreciate Chairman Stoller and the rest of the group working on this. We really dove into the budget and what, basically from a really strategic perspective, what does it mean to pass this budget? What are we trying to invest in? What are the types of outcomes we're trying to drive to achieve? And we really had some fruitful conversations in that regard, and then brought it ultimately to the council meeting for a work session, and then moved on to the City Council meeting tonight where statutorily we are required to have a public hearing on this budget tonight, and then ultimately we would ask for an approval of the budget at our October council meeting, ensuring that we meet our deadlines by the State Department of Local Government Finance. Just some recent accomplishments that the city is honored to tout. Money Magazine's Best Place to Live nominated us the best place to live in September of 2017. We're designated as an AARP Age-Friendly Community. We had a record year in economic development, over 2,000 new jobs, average wage of $66,000, and over $64 million in new investment. We opened the first Internet of Things lab, we acquired 70 acres of the last undeveloped land along the waterfront in Geist. We got the Champion of Inclusion Award by the Indiana Governors Council for people with disabilities. This is a much due part to Councilwoman Cobol's work on our Disability Task Force, and we are awarded the Emerging Arts Champion by the Nickel Plate Arts, and very excited about what Deputy Mary McGrath and others are working on to create a very dynamic art scene here in the City of Fishers, and more to come on that front. When we get to the brass tacks of financial accomplishments, it really is extraordinary the level of professionalism and transparency that our Controller's Office and frankly the City of Fishers has had for some time. Standard and Poor's rated us a AAA bond rating. We are the only municipality in the state of Indiana to have a AAA bond rating. That is the highest credit rating you can get from a bonding agency. Reports have shown that less than 2% of all local governments in the United States have a AAA bond rating. This is the 11th year in a row that we've received the Budget Presentation Award. What that means is we actually are rated by other professionals in the world of public finance that take a look at the document that we provide to our residents to be able to understand effectively what are our desired outcomes and what are the financial ramifications for the budget. And here again, we've received the budget award. And the 29th Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, again rating our CAFER, which we talked about a second ago where our Finance Committee was really getting into the weeds on the CAFER this week, it was some pretty exciting stuff. And again, a clean audit, which is extraordinary work on the Controller's part. Some of the strengths that we have is just the overall dynamic growth that we've seen in our economy, much like the rest of the country, but in fact even more so here in the City of Fishers. We have record unemployment rate, we had an amazing assessed growth value, so the assessed value within our community grew at 5.3%. Keep in mind that 5% growth is outside of our TIF districts. So the growth that you see in downtown Fishers is not included in that 5.3% growth, that's in all the other areas of our community. That doesn't include the $400 million of development that has occurred in our area. Why does that matter? As we grow our assessed value, the tax burden that's placed on the individual resident lessons, and so the more we grow our assessed value, the more we can spread out over the entire residency, the costs associated with providing the services and the quality of life that we've all come to expect here in our community. Our major initiatives are to continue to focus on road improvements and rehabilitation, trail connectivity between all areas of our city and beyond. We do have a number of facility improvements, although they might not be the most exciting thing. A number of our facilities have gone into disrepair, and we do need to do some significant upgrades to those facilities. Continued investment in our public safety as always, and a real focus on creating more efficiencies within our departments. To that point, our strategic investments in personnel for 2019 include two school resource officers. I think it's important to note that Lieutenant Mike Johnson in our Police Department had already created a strategic roadmap for the best way possible for us to meet the needs of our schools in terms of safety and engagement with our students well before the tragic events that befell Noblesville last spring. And so this, these two additional school resource officers are actually just a continuation of that vision, and what will this allow us to do basically is to get into the junior highs and elementaries more often than we are today. And then three additional sworn officers just to meet the ongoing need of an ever-growing community. Three additional firefighters, I wish I could say that this is an exciting expansion of coverage within our community, but in reality, as we grow and become an older department, we have more and more individuals that are either allotted additional PTO time because of their seniority in the organization, or frankly knees and shoulders get bad, they have to have surgery, and when those folks are out, we have to meet minimum standards. And so we were getting to a point where we were having to mandate people to come back into work on their days off and pay them overtime in order to meet minimum coverage. These three additional firefighters will not only allow us to do that, but also supplement some really interesting and exciting work being done on the community paramedicine front. We are proposing a 3% salary increase for all city employees and elected officials. We do have in the budget a plan to continue the city match of up to $1,000 for a 457 benefit plan. I am excited to say that after our first year, I believe we had almost 90-some percent adopt the 457 plan, which is extraordinary for a first year out, and it really is exciting for me to see that our employees are planning for their own particular future. Other approved positions is we are planning on moving a part-time paralegal to full-time paralegal, and then we have a sewer utility swing shift operator, which will allow us not to get in the weeds here, but will allow our wastewater treatment plant to continue to process our sewage at later times in the day versus having to keep people in for overtime or having to bring in a full additional shift. In terms of capital and equipment, we do plan on replacing 18 police vehicles, that's up from last year where we were at 13. As we continue to grow our force, we need to look at our replacement schedule. So in concert with Deputy Mayor Holgren, we looked at this and decided that we really did need to move that up. We have a new fire engine and a new fire medic planned in here as well as a fire extrication kit. We have a public works, we have seven new mowers there, four pickup trucks, two flatbed trucks, and you can see the rest of these. One of the things I will tell you is almost all of these are considered replacements and not additions. Here we have our city operations recommended budget, facilities, equipment, trails, parks, and roads. This is one of the areas I am very excited about, we're able to make some strategic investments. One is in the Nickel Plate Trail. We've allotted money to be able to work on the first section of the Nickel Plate Trail, anticipated to break ground on that hopefully next year, and that would be from 106th Street to 126th Street, and focus on a separated grade crossing at 116th Street. It also includes either a complete reconstruction or a significant renovation and expansion of our fire station headquarters. As many of you have seen, where we have some significant challenges in that building today, and we need to look at reimagining what that can look like to meet the needs of our fire and EMS team for the future. That also includes Fire Station 93 where we're currently out of space, our HVAC system is out of date, and we have some significant investment issues there, so I would anticipate either a complete reconstruction or a renovation of Fire Station 93. When you look at our overall financial implication on our residents for this budget, one thing that's important to note is the vast majority of that 4-cent increase is actually in the Fire Station 91 and Fire Station 93 expansion and reconstruction. About 3 cents out of that 4 cents, 2 and 1/2 to 3 cents is the actual fire station improvements. One of the things that I am excited to see is that our Police Department has been very cautious, and appropriately so, in looking at the deployment of body cams. They have run an extensive pilot program over this year, and they feel we're at a place that they feel comfortable moving forward with body cams. And so there is money allotted in here for us to have body cams put on each police officer moving forward. The rest of these you can see are various improvements to buildings, just because they're becoming out of date and they need to be recapitalized. And then towards the end you see we do have some significant road work projects, roundabout at 126 and Reynolds Drive, and a roundabout at 126 and Ford Drive, as well as finishing up the Allisonville Road widening project, and then as always various trail connectivity throughout our community. So if we get into the numbers side of the budget, those are the strategic investments, let's talk about the raw numbers. Our operating capital budget proposed for 2019 is roughly $92 million. Our debt service is $16.5 million, which leads to a total budget of $108 million. What's important to note is that we still have $36 million in cash reserves. This gives you just a breakdown of where all that money comes from and what funds they actually go into. This is just, this is more for people who are following this at home, but they can read through this and understand a little bit more about what's posted on Gateway versus what we're proposing tonight. Keep in mind that when we, when we put this out on Gateway, which is the official reporting mechanism for the state of Indiana, we have higher rates and we have all of our funds appropriated in there. So although that's in Gateway, the real numbers are what we're proposing here tonight, this is what we'd be executing on in terms of a budget. If we talk about the general fund, I think you will find this true about most general funds in cities today. The lion's share of this is in our Personnel Services. We are an organization that is a 24/7, 365-day-a-year operation, which requires adequate coverage, and that is our people. Our most valuable asset tends to be our people, and we're proud of the work product that we get per capita as opposed to many other municipalities. I want to talk a little bit about our fiscal health. So one of the, one of the benchmarks that we look at time and time again is where are we at with our cash reserves? How disciplined are we about maintaining the adequate cash reserves to meet the needs of our community? Let's say if the recession were to come a year or two years from now, do we have the cash flow to stomach dips in the economy where we wouldn't have to go borrow money? And this is, these are things that we talk to Standard and Poor's a lot about when they look at our overall fiscal health. So the basics of any budget are revenues come in, expenses go out, at the end of the year, if you have money left over, it goes to your bottom line. Are you continuing to build your bottom line, or are you losing money on an annual basis? The dark blue line that you see here is the actual cash reserves that we have or we anticipate having at the end of fiscal year 2019. The light blue line is what our cash reserve policy says we feel we need to have. So we base ours on 50% of the annual property tax generated in our municipality is what we think we should keep in cash reserves, that's the light blue line. The dark blue line demonstrates to you that we have met or exceeded, and each time actually exceeded, the actual amount of cash reserves that we need in, in our general fund. And we anticipate to do the same in 2019. Where our money goes in terms of our expenditures, 62% of that goes to public safety. A little bit deceiving here in the Administration Department includes several different departments, IT, HR, Business Solutions Group, Legal Office, Economic Development, those are all wrapped up into the Administration Office, so that may look like it's a little bit larger than what it actually is. And then obviously you can see Public Works here as well. Sources of revenue, our two dominant sources of revenue are income taxes and property taxes. Like I mentioned earlier, I'm very excited to see that our assessed value grew at 5.3% in property tax, that's a good sign. We'll talk about income taxes here in a moment. But nonetheless, we've seen revenue growth year in and year out in both of these main revenue streams, which is very good for the fiscal health of our city. One point that I think is an interesting comment that we've touched on before, when we look at local option to income tax distribution, this is an interesting graph that Lisa's provided here, Carmel and Fishers are only about 300 to 400 people difference in population. That's the left-side graph. The right-side graph shows the distribution of income taxes, where you will see that there's a 18% difference in income tax distribution even though we're only 300 people apart. What that equates to is about $19 million. So Carmel will receive roughly $19 million more in income tax than the City of Fishers will in fiscal year 19, which is a significant discrepancy between Fishers and Carmel. This just gives you a breakdown of the tax rate, I think oftentimes people don't understand that your total tax rate, the $2.27 is made up not of just the City of Fishers and our collective decisions fiscally, but a lot of other governmental entities. In fact, we are not the largest driver of the tax rate in the City of Fishers, that would be the school district at $1.27, we come in at 65 cents. Here it gives you an example, just to look at Hamilton County where we line up in terms of municipal tax rates. So when we look at just our tax rate, not total tax rate, but just our tax rate, you will see that we currently have the lowest tax rate in Hamilton County. And then when you look at the 10 largest cities in Indiana, if you look at our current tax rate, which is the top blue line at 65 cents, and our proposed tax rate of 2019 at 69 cents, that still puts us as the lowest municipal tax rate of any of the 10 largest cities in Indiana by quite a, quite a bit. And that assumes that all other entities will keep their tax rates the same. Any questions from the City Council at this time?
Any questions, comments from council?
Jeff Hill said at 136, is that the end of the roundabout?
No, that's still funded, but we had funded that in a previous year, so we didn't put that on there as a highlight. Yeah. Other questions? Seeing none, there is a statutory provision for a public hearing.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
On the, because the camera, body camera's new to us.
Yes.
For the officers, I think is a significant step forward for their safety. Will there be an incre, what is the cost, I know, not dollars and cents right now, I'm just thinking in terms of long-term storage.
Yeah.
I'm not asking you how long the storage is, but the use over time and how, if there's an increasing cost to that over the course of years.
One of the things that I'm proud of, the way the Police Department approached this, is they really did try to take an all-expenses-included thought about this. So it wasn't just how much is this camera right here, but what is the total cost of delivering that type of service? And to my understanding, the, the product that they're looking at using, Deputy Mayor Holgren, correct me if I'm wrong on this, it is really an all-inclusive package, so it's a subscription-based, which means they'll take care of all the storage. So it's about $150,000 I believe, a year, and that means that they'll take care of all the editing, all the off-site storage. Anytime a camera goes bad and we need a new one, they replace it, and so we're not going to be in the business of trying to store hours and hours of video on-premise.
Right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would ask that you hold a public hearing, then I'll be happy to respond to any questions or comments that are made after that.
All right, I'm going to open up for a public hearing, it's a time where you can come up and give your input. There's a three-minute time limit. With that being said, I know that there's several individuals here that may speak on, hold on a second, several individuals here that may be speaking with regard to the Nickel Plate Trail. I do ask that if there's several here that are, that just say that are against that, it would be my guess, that you keep the comments to new comments, you're welcome to make your comments, but keep those to new, not, so we're not saying the same thing and we have 40 people come up to say the identical thing. Also be respectful. We do have, we're a live stream and we also have students here, so whether we may be passionate about a project, just make sure that we're respectful in what we're saying. You will state your name and address for the record in three minutes. Mike, you ready to go?
Hi, I'm Michael Colby, I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. You talked about the increased assessed values, that's good. How are we doing on caps? Can you give me an idea of what the percentage of homes that are capped right now, and what impact does that assessed valuation increase have on that? You also talked about the major source of income being income tax and property tax. You have a wheel tax, and I'm just kind of curious about that wheel tax. How much is that generating? And I assume, maybe I shouldn't, that that fund is used specifically for roads? So those are my clarification questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you Mike. Anyone else wish to speak? Step forward, state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, I'm Brian Allison, I live at 12924 Chorley Wood Circle in Fishers. First of all, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you, first time I ever spoke to the council. And I speak to you in two capacities, as an individual who lives in Fishers, and then as an HOA board member of Avalon of Fishers. As an individual, I want to tell you, first of all, I'm just amazed at what the city has done over the last few years. I've worked in Fishers most of my life, I have worked, lived in Fishers only five years. I came from a community not too far from here that saw a huge decline in a major industry. City continued to decline, still declining, loss of thousands of students in the public school system. I finally saw the light and said I needed to get out of here before my home wasn't worth a dime anymore, and I, I am glad I got out when I did. And what you have done, and what you are continuing to do, and the vision of the mayor and the, and the city employees, I applaud you for it. No city's perfect, but I can tell you from what I've lived through in my former city and what I have now, I applaud you all. So I, I come to you today to ask for something that South Avalon, which is one of our sister neighborhoods on 126th Street, just east of Hamilton Southeastern High School, and our neighborhood, Avalon of Fishers, 1,008 units there in that neighborhood, is, is wanting you to consider for the budget, and that is re-adding the sidewalk on the north side of 126th Street from Oleo to Campus Parkway. The reason we do that is for three primary reasons. One, I really don't care why it's not there now and why it was once there, that's immaterial to me. The community of South Avalon shares our amenities, so they have to walk across the street and on the sidewalk, so they have no walk on that side. So they have to walk along the street. So they have to walk along the street for part of the way to get into our neighborhood to come to our amenities, which they share and they help pay for. So it's a protection issue for our citizens. Number two, and, and I, I'll laugh a little bit at this, I know there's a lot of cars in the Hamilton Southeastern Park, Park, Drive, Parking Area, so I can't say many students are going to walk to school. But for those on that side of the street, if they would, they're going to have to cross the street a couple of times to get to the school and back and forth. And even parents or families walking to that high school at night, that's a difficult thing. And then number two, as you consider the Greenway Parkway that runs on the Duke easement, that comes right through our neighborhood, and I'm assuming you're going to want a lot of access to that. You'll, I don't think you want people crossing the sidewalks on both sides. So I would just ask for your consideration for the budget for 2019. I know you're thinking of it later, but we'd ask for you to think about that sooner than later. And again, I really appreciate you listening to me this evening.
Perfect, three minutes, right on the dot. That's outstanding. You didn't have a script up there or anything that you practiced? No. Thank you very much, though, appreciate the comments. Anyone else wish to step forward, state your name and address for the record? You'll have three minutes to speak.
Adam Satchko, AD 950 Technology Drive. Is the city entertaining to help with budgetary costs of the trail, taking donations for trail sections like other places do? In other words, you donate X dollars for your name on a section, a mile or two of the trail or whatever?
Let's, let's, what we're doing is we're going to write down these questions, and they're going to answer them, just so that we can continue.
Thank you very much.
Great question, okay? All right, thank you. Yeah. We have a green room in the back with refreshments, I'm sure somebody will get you there. No, all right. People coming here wanting to donate? I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. Yeah. It's great, go home, tell the wife. People want to donate while we're doing the city budget, it's amazing. All right, moving on, anyone else wish to speak? Step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm Denise Webster, and I live at 12058 Clubhouse Drive in River Glen. I just have a couple of questions on the budget. The various trail projects, if they could be identified and explained further? And the widening of Allison Road, if that is going to include any type of bike trail? And where it's going to start, and where it's going to stop? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good questions. Anybody else? Come on up. If you raise your hand, you'll never get up here, so you need to run up here, okay?
Peter Knight, 13972 Catalina Drive. Got a question related to the, the nickel plate. I had heard that it was deemed impractical to run the trail alongside the existing nickel plate railroad. Was there a study done about that? And if so, could I see a copy of it?
Thank you, we'll, we'll answer these at the, at the end. Thank you very much. Somebody was raising their hand. Bieber, come on up here. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Ellie Peterson, and I live at 10511 Cellar Court. And I'm a student in the Finance Academy, and I just had two things. The first thing that was really interesting to me was when Mayor Fadness was talking about how even though Carmel only has like 300 more, like residents, that they are still receiving $19 million more dollars. I was just kind of interested about that and was wondering like what the city was doing to try and like get some more money in that area. And then the last thing that I was going to talk about was when we like leave school on 126th Street and Oleo, it is really, it's always like really, like really backed up there. And I was just wondering like if there is anything in the budget, or like if it was possible to like maybe like add an extra lane, or even like half of like a lane in that area, so that it's easier for students to get in and out of the parking lot in the school in the mornings.
Is that mainly on Oleo or 126th?
Mainly on 126th.
126th.
And then kind of once you get past that, that light there, the 126th and Oleo light, it's a lot smoother, but.
When you come out on 126th?
Yeah, like when you're turning like out of like the athletic parking lot, HSE, like when you turn left.
Okay, just wanted to understand that, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good job. Yes, sir, come on up. Just state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's David Blair, 12026 Clubhouse Drive in Fishers. I wasn't going to speak, I swore I'd keep quiet. But I have two questions. I'd like to see or hear the breakout. I know they're wanting to put the trail under 116th Street, and it's going to cost special money. Can we see what the difference is going to be in that particular tunnel to put under there? Because I know that Monong goes through tunnels also. Secondly, I want to commend the city for the beautiful landscaping. Especially along 116th Street and some of the corners, that's a lot of work. And everybody I talk to, I say, when you come through Fishers, you will see some very nice landscaping. And I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome, yes. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Going once, twice, or close the public hearing? Mayor Fadness and whoever, if you want to go through each item.
Yep.
Share those. I don't know if Leah, you wanted to share additional?
Okay.
Thank you, students.
You guys leaving, I'm not done.
We're just getting warmed up, come on. Well, so much for that 126th Street.
Someone offered to buy it handled, I think.
That went downhill real fast, all right.
I'm sure there is, yes, yeah.
All right, I, I want to address each one of these questions, and I appreciate the residents' thoughtful requests. To Mr. Colby's questions, the wheel tax yielded right, right under $2.1 million this year, which is a little bit lower than what we anticipated. We anticipated $2.5 million, so we made the adjustments that we needed to in terms of our road resurfacing. Every dollar of that money went to deploy directly to our roads. And there's no better example of when you go to a neighborhood now, you actually see, David, we've talked about this, where we actually do the entire neighborhood in resurfacing versus kind of that patchwork quilt approach that we've done in the past, because we just didn't have the funding to do it. So I appreciate the residents willing, maybe some willing, maybe not so willing, but to pay that wheel tax and make us able to really keep up with our infrastructure needs.
Mayor, for context on that, it's $2.1 million this year as compared to what before?
Zero, yeah, absolutely. We tripled our ability to pave roads.
Excellent, thank you.
In terms of the circuit breaker loss, one of the important things about AV growth is it does allow you to keep from losing more and more money to the circuit breaker. And a case in point of this is in 2014, our circuit breaker loss was $1.7 million. Our projected circuit breaker loss in 2019 is $1.6 million. So what that means is by continuing to grow our assessed value, we're keeping our tax rates stable or reasonably stable, which then allows us to not affect circuit breaker loss overall. And that's not just us, that's our other partners like the schools, being mindful of their overall tax rate management. As for South Avalon, the gentleman that spoke about the trail section, you can thank your staunch advocate and your council member, Brad Doreemer, who was passionately advocating for this at the work session today. We do believe that this is something that we need to address in 2019, given the fact that it was actually there at one point and taken back out for whatever reason in 2007 for construction purposes. We do want to see that project move forward in 2019. So we're going to make some adjustments to our overall trail plan and move that forward. So thank you, Councilmember Doreemer, for bringing that to our attention, and we'll, we'll move the needle on that, sir, yet in 2019. And as for the crosswalks as well, we'll look to strategically, strategically locate those to make sure pedestrians have a safe, safe way forward. As for Allisonville Road, our anticipation is that it will be four lanes from 116th Street through to 131st Street. Right now, obviously, anyone who lives over there knows very well that we're in the middle of road construction at the moment. We were hoping to have all four lanes done this fall, we are not going to be able to accomplish that. Our goal is to have two lanes done this year and then finish up next year. And that will include, include a trail all along Allisonville Road up to Conroe Prairie, which will be a nice addition that's been long overdue in that section of our community.
Scott, may I interrupt? How much, this year, how much debt have we incurred to build that? How's the 4?
None, that was all paid for out of cash.
Okay.
So, and, and our help from the federal government as well. So, yeah, that was fortunate that we did not have to do that. I could spend a long time in a whiteboard on the co-ed question that the, the student brought up, but needless to say, it is a significant concern of ours that we're receiving $19 million less in income tax than our neighbors, which were basically very similar cities. We will continue to try to address that legislatively. As for the trail discussion, we have always contended that an at-grade crossing at 116th Street would not be a very viable concept, and so we are looking to go with a tunnel. We looked at both above-grade, like a bridge or a tunnel, and both scenarios are actually right around the same cost. So we think that that crossing will be somewhere between $2 to $4 million to accomplish, and we look forward to moving that project forward, and that is contemplated in this budget that we have before you tonight. As for the conversation about rails to trails, or save the trail, or save the train, not the trail, to be quite honest with you, it was a policy decision that was made some time ago. We're moving forward at this point. I'm not here to argue the merits one way or another of that policy decision, and we look forward to creating an amenity that will be transformative for not only the city of Fishers, but the region, that will elicit a significant improvement in quality of life, further investment in our community, and I'm excited to see it move forward. With that, I yield back to you, Council President, any further questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments from council? And then the donate, yeah, donation fees.
Oh, donations, yes.
How would you forget that?
Yeah, geez.
I'm really worried about that.
Yeah, as for people, we've had an overwhelming amount of support from the community around the trail. Leah McGrath, our deputy mayor, has been working with our chairs, John Weingard, our co-chair, and Amanda Welu, on a community facilitation engagement around what could this possibly be. And we've got a number of sponsors that are very interested in being a part of the trail going forward. So John, I'd turn it over to you if you have any comments.
Yeah, actually, there's one question I think that was not, if we can, if we can address that. You know, the gentleman I think believed mentioned, talked about having the rail and the trail together.
Yeah.
Correct? And, and, and that's just a policy decision that we've made, or?
It's a policy decision we made. We've also looked at it from an engineering perspective, and the amount of homes or properties that would have to be taken to accommodate, plus the additional cost, we did not find it to be a viable project from the start.
So we'd be having to take right away from homeowners all up and down there to do that?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just had, just a couple of comments.
Sure.
Appreciate the, everything that you've put together here, Scott, and I just wanted to reiterate, some of the biggest drivers for the budget, obviously, the police station from last year, the fire station, upgrades that we need to do on the trail, so it's not just one item, it's several items that are coming.
That's correct.
A lot of those items are 25 years old.
That's correct.
1993 is when some of those started, so I think it's important to do that reinvestment. Some of the things that we've gone over, the, I think you clarified for me before the meeting, is the fire, using the wrong terminology, but the, the debt, the repayment of that.
Yes.
Is over a longer period from what it was.
It is, it's a great point, Councilman George, because it is over a longer period of time, but it's not over a traditional 25-year amortization. So because this city is in strong financial standing, we decided to pay off the anticipated fire station debt in 10 years, not 25 years, so that we don't have overlapping debt. So when, when the reporters talked about the increase in tax rate in the city of that 4 cents, the majority of that is actually attributed to the fire stations that we intend to reconstruct and build, along with some road projects. The trail itself is probably only about a cent of that 4 cents.
Okay. And two or things real quick, just while I've got the microphone, I think it's important when we were a town, and then also we've continued as a city to have that cash reserve. And we talk about it, and you clarified the amount that we have, and I think it's very, very important, because we're in good times now, but there's always a recession. They happen every who knows how often. But when they do happen, you're able to kind of batten down the hatches and be ready for that. So that amount is, why is it so much more? Well, it's there in the bad times. And when you have the bad times, you understand who planned for those. And a lot of communities, about 10 years ago, when you had not just a recession, something more, you saw a lot of people weren't able to, they had, you know, laid people off, they weren't able to hire, and that was bad for tho- those particular communities. So I think it's important to have that cash reserve, and I say it every year, just because I've been through 16 budgets now, and I've been through a couple of recessions, and you see the effect of those. So I think it's important to keep that up as a city, so.
Yeah, you and I have, you and I have lived through those difficult decisions before, and I think the other thing to notice, or to note, to, I think it was John's question or point, you know, Allisonville Road, we were able to come up with the cash to build that road. The fire station, we financed a portion of it, and we paid for a portion of it out of cash reserve. So one of the things that we have a long tradition of doing is saving up money and then investing in capital items that will last for 20, 30, 50 years, and that, I believe, is sound financial management.
Last thing real quick, just a note that we talked about, over the last couple of years, we've got additional funding for road maintenance, which I think is important. It's important just for the, not just the roads, but also the value of every subdivision. When you go through, it's kind of like your house. If you redo the carpet, then all of a sudden you see that the, the paint in the house needs to be redone. So if the city invests in the things that his has, I think people will invest in their homes as well. So I think we're seeing the benefits of that. But before we had, the mechanism that we had a couple of years ago started, we had certain funds, because you just went through an entire budget, and if you dive deeper into some of those buckets, you can use some of that money to build roads but not maintain them.
Correct.
Which doesn't quite make sense, so we had to find a way to do that. So really, starting in 2009 or '10, we started to look through that, and that was the mechanism that we had. So when you go through and look at some subdivisions now, you can go to Fishers Point down here by, if you go south of CVS and kind of swing around, you'll see a subdivision that, it's a very nice community, but that was before we had that, it was three or four years ago, and that's got little patchworks, and we just weren't able to do the curb-to-curb. But then if you go down to 96th and Allisonville, to the pines in Roxbury, that was in essence after that, but you can see what it is from curb to curb. It gives the, the community that, that fit and feel. And a lot of times, Realtors come through, and they, they think it's a brand-new community, but it really isn't. It's been there for some time. So that's why I say it just helps the trend of different communities, so I'm glad that we're still doing that.
Absolutely. Other questions, comments?
Just a quick question about FTEs. We had the city employees about 400 people, plus or minus.
Correct.
About how, how many of those are attributable to public safety, police, and fire?
We have 117 sworn police officers, and we have 134, 40? 140? What?
Personal.
144.
So approximately 50%, give or take, of the city's.
And well, and if you, then I would, I would clump Public Works into that conversation as well, if you're talking about people who are delivering direct services in the ways of plowing streets, the core things that people would think of, and there we have about 80. So you're, our, our administrative staff is very small.
So approximately 60% of daily city staff is out delivering services to residents.
Boots on the ground, for sure.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I'll make a motion, have a second reading?
And just to clarify, we will be back at the October meeting. That is not a statutorily required public hearing, but would look for final adoption so we can meet the DLGF timelines. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you very much, and thank you, residents, for your comments, questions, being very respectful, and, and donations coming in during the city budget, it's pretty, pretty amazing. All right, moving on. We're moving to 091718, request to approve the 2019 salary ordinance.
Good evening. For the record, Ethan Lee, City of Fishers, HR Director, and I'm here to present the 2019 proposed salary ordinance. As the mayor already mentioned, a few of these were part of the budget presentation, and all of these changes to the salary ordinance are, are part of the 2019 proposed budget. As the mayor mentioned, proposing a 3% increase in bi-weekly maximums for all positions, including elected officials. Also, as mentioned by the mayor in his budget presentation, changing the part-time paralegal position to a full-time position. Due to increase in responsibilities and requirements of the position, changing the changing the safety coordinator title to safety manager. That is a Public Works position. Due to increase in required skill set and market demand, the maintenance technician two and senior maintenance technician positions move into a respective higher pay grade, also Public Works positions. Due to improved career path structure and modernization of the department, the fire department, compensation for chauffeur, dive team for fire, paramedic, and self-contained breath apparatus will no longer be identified as incentive pays. Those changes do not increase the overall salary for that department. Also, in fire, adding the firefighter-medic position title to better reflect separation from a firefighter and a firefighter that requires the medical, or medic certification. And lastly, also in fire department, increasing, because of the increasing responsibilities and requirements of the position, changing the fire office manager title to fire administrative services manager. Again, these are all proposed in the department budgets and for your consideration. Questions?
Any questions or comments from council? None? All right.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on first reading?
Motion to suspend by John, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion by Eric. Second by Selena. There was crickets. Where's Pete when you need him? Motion by Eric, second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to zero-nine-one-seven-one-eight B. Request to consider right-of-way and easement vacations for Techway.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dale Davis. I am a senior planner with Department of Planning and Zoning. So, the next three items on the agenda are all right-of-way easement vacations related to three projects here in our downtown. The first one is for the Techway Office Building, and it will be located where this existing building is at the new entrance to our Technology Park. When we relocated this entrance a couple of years ago, the old entrance remains right-of-way. So, this item on your agenda will vacate that back to the property. And there's also a number of easements crisscrossing the middle of the property where that parking lot was. So, those will be vacated as well. The idea behind that is we'll get them vacated, we'll file a secondary plat and clean it all up where they actually need to be. And there's also a tip of right-of-way down at the corner where our new Technology Way entrance is. This one does require a public hearing, and we ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Any questions or comments before a public hearing? I'll open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic may step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
First, I'm giving you money, then I'm giving you problems. Adam Suchko, Eighty-Nine Fifty Technology Drive. I have the property across the street from that, and when Steve brought the stratus, and parking was terrible. And everybody was trying to figure out how to buy my property. Well, then we ended up having people park on our property. And then now, you're going to put a thirty thousand square foot building on a place where it's barely a ten thousand square foot building and hope that these vacated lands are going to be enough to handle that capacity of parking? I just want to make sure that someone did the math and hopefully think about it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
One point, and it's a great point of concern. One of the things, and Dale can touch on this, but there are ratios that we require. So, even though they want to build a thirty thousand square foot building, they will have to meet certain parking ratios to accomplish that.
Okay, we're still, hold on a second, we're still in public hearing. Anyone else wish to step forward, or speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes to speak. All right, and I'm closing the public hearing. All right.
And to answer the question, yes, we are looking at the parking ratios right now. We have a draft site plan. And the petitioner is actually wanting more parking than we would require because their tenant is proposing more occupancy than what our standards would really contemplate. So, they're already going above and beyond.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Need to suspend the rule, is, we need to suspend the rules on this, correct? Motion to suspend by Eric, second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to pass? Motion to approve by Eric, second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to zero-nine-one-seven-one-eight C. Request to consider right-of-way and easement vacations for North Ellipse.
And we have two projects side by side at the North Ellipse, but for the sake of keeping the property records as clean as possible, they are split into two ordinances here. The one we're focusing on right now is this former parking lot for when launched was in the basement of the library. BW is proposing a four-story office building on this site. Again, they will be parked above our own standards, and that parking is intended to help with our nickel plate events. We're going to put some crosswalks in and really try and tie everything together. Here's your two areas of vacation. There's a fairly wide easement running in front of the property. There will be a place for this line, but for now, we need to get rid of this easement so we can put it in the proper location. And with our nickel plate district code, we don't need as much right-of-way surrounding the parcel as we had when it was originally platted. So, we want to vacate that portion and return it to the property so we can put that back on the tax rolls and allow them a little more development space. With that, happy to answer any questions, and another public hearing.
We'll go ahead and open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Michael Colby. I live at seven-one-zero-five Cold Lake Drive in River Glen. I just have a question about the parking. I know when I was on the council, we were talking about parking in downtown. And I know we've got a number of different locations that are parking. I'm just kind of curious where we are with that. I think at one time I heard we were going to have like seven hundred parking spaces, and you're taking a parking lot away. And I notice sometimes when I drive through, I see that the Fishers Fire Department folks are parking up on the grass. I just, I'd like to have someone just kind of comment in general on the parking downtown and where we are with adequacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. That will close the public hearing. Dale, if you'd like to answer that question?
Certainly. The new parking lot will be available for public parking after five, six o'clock, once business is closed. And it will have double, if not triple, the parking that's on that lot. There is a, let's go back up to the site plan. There's a significant amount of land back through here that will all become a parking lot. We're also looking at adding street parking around the perimeter of the site. So, we will be adding a significant amount of parking.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? No? Motion to suspend the rules by Eric. Second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Motion to approve by Eric, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Dale. We'll move on to zero-nine-one-seven-one-eight D on the western side of the North Ellipse.
Yes. This next item is vacation surrounding this property adjacent to the pond. There's kind of a triangle area adjacent to the road, as well as, like on the BW side, a portion in front of the building that will become part of their parcel. So, here's our proposed vacation areas. And as with the other side, once this is approved, we're going to put through a secondary plat to really clean this all up, so it's all one nice parcel. With that, happy to answer any questions.
All right, open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one stepping forward. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Motion to suspend rules.
Okay, motion by Eric, second by Cecilia. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, suspended. Motion to approve by Eric, second by John. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Good job, yeah. All right, moving on to zero-eight-two-zero-one-eight. Request to approve an ordinance adjusting rates and charges for the use of and services rendered by the City of Fishers Stormwater Utility System. Second and third reading and a public hearing.
For the record, Rick Farnham, Director of the Water Quality Division for Public Works, for your consideration tonight and on second, third reading as an ordinance. It increases the stormwater utility rate from its four dollars and ninety-five cents per equivalent residential unit, or ERU, per month to six dollars and sixty-six cents per ERU, which is an increase of a dollar seventy-one. The rate increase is designed to bring in slightly over one point two million dollars of new revenue into the utility. Approximately a little less than a million of that, one point two million, is designated for capital improvements. We have a list of around eight point three million dollars' worth of capital improvements in our revised capital plan. The remainder of that money that's coming in would be designed to balance our operating budget, to make us solvent over the next few years. Of the twenty-seven, there's roughly twenty-seven thousand residential users of the stormwater utility. They would actually see an annualized increase of twenty dollars and fifty-two cents. The rate is actually a monthly rate, but it's only billed once a year. So, most residents are accustomed to thinking of this in terms of a annual rate. So, their annual rate would go, it's a flat rate, would go from fifty-nine dollars and forty cents to seventy-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. There is around fifteen hundred non-residential or commercial parcels or properties that are users of the stormwater utility. Their rates would be, instead of a flat rate, what they would pay per parcel is variable based on the total amount of impervious surface. So, large commercial properties with large driveways, parking lots, rooftops, they would pay more compared to other ones. In the, for the first reading, we presented some of the numbers of the sort of top twenty-five commercial facilities. Some of those increases were rather significant. I wanted to bring to light that really on a average basis or a median basis, the increase for commercial properties is, would be around two hundred and twenty-seven dollars per year increase, rather than some of the rather large numbers we were looking at for entities such as Hamilton Southeastern School District, which has a lot of parking lots and properties. I also wanted to add a little bit more information or clarification from information I provided at the first reading based on questions that council members had at that time. I wanted to clarify that this is really the first rate increase that the stormwater utility has had in ten years. So, since its inception as utility back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight time period, this is the first time there's really been an increase. The rate is really looking at, and the financial outlook is really a three- to five-year outlook. So, this really needs to be revisited again from staff's opinion in the next three to five years. We really didn't want to project that any farther than that with this particular rate. But rather than having something that we've come back every ten years, we think it should be on a regular cycle, say, every three years. The rate that we're asking for has no phase-in, so it's an immediate, as soon as it's passed by council. The next round of billing, which would be the spring of next year, twenty nineteen, it would not be phased in at all. The original rate ten years ago had a little bit of a phase-in program over a three-year period. Also, the rate has no built-in escalator as far as the CPI adjustment or other kind of adjustment. So, it's just this rate until the council takes up this issue again and decides to either raise it or lower it in the future. Also, wanted to make clear too that this proposed rate is, even though it varies for commercial properties, and it's a flat rate for residential, it's all based on impervious surface. Our community with our stormwater utility, and roughly eighty percent of the other utilities in the U.S. all use impervious surface, is sort of a surrogate on what the real demand is for services from a stormwater utility. So, we're kind of, we're obviously weighing the majority on communities that use this particular index. I wanted to mention also too that the Board of Public Works did provide a positive recommendation on this rate increase back in their July meeting, and the finance, Council Finance Committee also provided a positive recommendation at their July meeting. This time, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and this does require a public hearing. Well, our next billing cycle would be late winter, early spring. Different nineteen, yes.
All right, let me go ahead and open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
I think you know me by now. Michael Colby, seven-one-zero-five Cold Lake. I'd just like to get a little specific detail on the capital improvement projects that are, you're identifying in this, in this area, and how much are we talking about cost-wise for those capital improvement projects?
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to step forward, state your name and address for the record? You'll have three minutes to speak.
Denise Webster. I live in River Glen at one-two-zero-five-eight Clubhouse Drive. I didn't have my calculator with me, but just would like to know, it's on the commercial rate, what is the percentage of the increase? Is it twenty, thirty, forty? I think the residential is right about at twenty, if I'm not mistaken. I'd like that clarified too.
Okay, thank you.
And a comparison of both. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record? I see no one else stepping forward. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Questions, comments from council? We might want to go ahead and just answer those questions first, and then we'll have council ask questions.
Yeah, we currently have a project list of roughly eight point three million dollars in improvements. That project list is summarized in the back of the financial study that was done in June of this year. It's also part of an exhibit that's for this hearing and for Public Works, so it's available to the public. We also have a.
Where can they, just so that, where they can find, I want to make sure, Mike, do you know where to find that? I just want to make sure it's not buried somewhere. Okay.
It's actually one of the attachments for the first reading. It's also an attachment on the Public Works and Finance Committee meetings in July. That is only a one-page summary, though, that's really in that financial document. We now have a draft of the complete capital improvement plan, or for our master planning purposes. And that will be posted shortly for public comment on the specific projects that are included in that list. So, we're looking forward to getting input on that, making any changes as needed as time goes on.
Okay.
And then the rate itself, as I mentioned, it's based on impervious surface. So, really, the rate for residential and for commercial is the same. It's currently four ninety-five in ERU per month for both residential and commercial. The difference being that all residential properties are considered to be one ERU, where a commercial property may be five ERUs, a thousand ERUs, depending on the size of the impervious area. So, the ERU unit itself is actually three thousand three hundred and eighteen square feet of impervious surface. That's based on an average of residential properties, actually, based on the work that was done really ten years ago when the utility was first set up. We think that number is still good as far as using it to continue on. And the difference that commercial properties pay really is just based on how many ERUs are in their particular parcel. So, really, the increase is thirty-five percent increase, whether it be a residential ratepayer or a commercial one. So, the ERU is the same for both. And it went up, if the council passes this ordinance, it'll go up by a dollar seventy-one or thirty-five percent.
And once again, first being realized in the spring of nineteen?
Yeah, it'd be the billing cycle that we work through the Controller's Office to get that billing out. Usually, it's in February or March time period that billing comes out.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, real quick, I wrestled with this because, Rick, when you said that big number the last time, they're really kind of, it was a little surprising. And when I went through the plan, I could see that it's the biggest user. It's HSE. They've got a lot of hard surface and things like that. So, I'll go ahead and support this because I think after ten years, it's, we probably should have looked at, or we should have. looked at this before, then you get to more of a, you know, 3% or something like that. But when you get to a big number, the same thing with the sanitary, going forward, I think it's probably more important to, every three to five years, look at, look at this. And the other reason for the support is, I know that this is almost like, or it is a utility, so you go through, you have a capital plan. The report here reviews the capital plan, and then they identify the rate based on that. So these are specific projects that are tied to a specific plan, so if it's approved, I know you said you're going to go through a process to make sure that those are the actual projects, but actual projects are used to incorporate the rate, so it's not just the rate is picked, it's something that's set up for a specific project, so we'll be able to share with the citizens over the next number of years. These are the specific projects, very similar to the sanitary rate. I would always talk to residents, and they would say, "We need some help on 106th Street," and if you go on 106th Street west of the interstate now, there are some road improvements happening, but the road improvements are because, as you know, underneath the ground, we're doing some very significant sewer work. And most people don't understand the sewer work, you just flush and it happens, but the road work is something people see. So I think this capital plan, people start to see and will be able to note that, that this was an increase, but it was for these projects that were not going to happen, but are, and they're needed by the community. So I'll support it for that reason.
Exactly. If I could just add, that we started this process really with revising the capital plan, and with staff input and using our consultant DLZ, that was really the first step, and then that capital plan, as you already pointed out, was fed into the rate. So it wasn't just the opposite, what would be a good number, and then design a capital plan after the fact, that the capital plan came first.
Yeah, and I struggle sometimes with the initial, when you see the amounts at times of things, because these items, sometimes in government and politics and stuff, get kicked down the road and to somebody else to have to deal with, and so I just feel, I appreciate the council, mayor, for just being, in terms of a lot of different avenues that we're going to, we've just got to review things every year and not have something constantly kicked down the road, because that's just, it just ends up where you have, you're finding out you have capital projects that have to be done, and you don't have the, you don't have the resources there. So I appreciate that. Do we need to suspend the rules on this? Yes, all right. Any other comments or questions?
I just agree with all you guys. We need to look at this every year, sewer and the stormwater, so if you would, put it on the calendar every year.
Yeah, I would agree with Brad on that, just from standpoint, not only do we need to look at rate, we need to look at our capital plan, making sure we're addressing all our needs. I think you can look at other communities that surround us, and maybe some issues they have in these areas that we need to make sure we address and stay ahead of it. I think our taxpayers expect that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, suspend the rules.
Okay. Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Good evening. Hopefully, we're ending the council meeting on a positive note here. For the record, Chris Greisel, Attorney for the City of Fishers. I'm here tonight before you to address an amendment to our city code regarding golf carts. As you all are probably familiar now, there's a general prohibition on golf cart usage on city highways or other public ways and sidewalks within the city, and to date, the only exception to that prohibition is when neighborhood communities collectively determine that golf carts should be utilized on certain designated roadways within their communities. In order to receive that neighborhood exemption, an HOA or the developer must receive 75% of approval of all lot owners through a question that's certified to its residence. So it's recently come up, over the past month, to the city's attention, that there are certain individuals who have utilized their golf carts for acts of performing public service, but if their neighborhood was not exempt, they were violating the city's prohibition on utilizing golf carts on public roads. So we thought it would be great to add an amendment to this ordinance, seeking essentially a public service exemption for certain individuals to utilize their golf carts, despite the prohibition that the city has. Through this process and the amendment, a resident will have the ability to complete an application for public service. The city will review the application and determine that, one, whether the golf carts can be safely operated within the neighborhood for a public service purpose; two, the applicant must show proof of financial responsibility and proper insurance on the golf cart; and three, the chief of police may designate this exemption at their sole discretion. So with that tonight, I know this is something that a lot of the council members have been wanting to address here with the recent story of what I'll call the trash man in Hamilton proper, and so tonight is the first step at addressing those exemptions and trying to recognize great public service that's happening in our community. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
There are many residents of Britton Falls that thank you very much for helping this gentleman.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
I did owe that, too. I see him down the street, going down in my neighborhood, so I really appreciate it, and he's done this for many, many years and on his own, and I appreciate you doing this.
Can he come to Windermere?
All right, I have a question.
Brad, I don't think you've ever done that before, sorry.
I was going to go four years now, but this one kind of affects.
Sorry, this really threw me off. This is, this is, this is a weird night.
It's going to be, it's going to be in your newsletter tomorrow, isn't it?
It is going to be in the newsletter. Look for Brad's newsletter. All right. Motion by Brad, second by Eric. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Make sure we get the word out to them. All right, real quickly, any unfinished or new business? Last month, the council had first reading on an amendment to its legislative districts. Over the past two years, the city has conducted a special partial census, and the county has updated its precinct boundaries. Together, the council believed it may be time to redistrict. After further review, the council now believes it is not the appropriate time to amend its legislative districts. With the city's population continuing to expand, the council believes that it will be in a much better position to make a more accurate and informed redistricting decision following the 2020 decennial census. It is the council's hope that this decision will allow for a uniform redistricting process that will keep its legislative districts intact for years to come. With that, I'm going to open up for community comment. This is a time where you can share anything you want within a three-minute time limit. It does not have to be on any topic that we covered today. You will have a three-minute time limit, so if you want, you can step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Colby. I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive. I don't want to rain on you, Chris, so I'm going to try to keep this positive, and I'm going to kind of take you and add to what David Blair said about the beauty of 116th Street. Unfortunately, it kind of stops at Arby's. In fact, if you go up there, you'll see a great big hole in the ground that Kroger was going to build in. We've got probably nine pizza parlors in that area, we've got hair salons, we've got massage parlor, we've got feet parlor, we've got eyebrow geysers, we've got two used car lots, and essentially what I'm saying is, that area is not looking too good. We've got a dilapidated, old, nearly abandoned shopping center on the southwest corner, so that's one thing I want to talk about. I have three minutes, so I'm going to move on. I came in a couple of months ago, and I talked about the private roads. I'd asked the council to take a look at their responsibility in dealing with the landowners and having the covenants enforced. That was an official request, I don't know if it came across that way. I have not heard anything. I had talked to my councilperson, Selena Stoller. She has said there are some things in the hopper, but she's unaware of the details on that. We want to know. Go out there and drive those roads. There are potholes out there today, and winter hasn't been a lot. I was informed in a shotgun letter that came out from Dan Domsick, that our street signs, not particularly ours, but it happens to affect us, are not compliant with the town, the street sign laws. So we have to make those changes. I've got an estimate from Sign Solutions, who has done a lot of the sign improvements here in the city. It's going to cost $9,000 for us to bring those signs up to stand. I'm asking, I've asked Trish Bassett, he and I've had some discussions, to say, okay, the option is, you can either go with a city sign, or you can stay with a decorative sign. I polled our community, not necessarily scientifically, but most of the meetings I have, my board meetings, are pretty well attended by. The majority of people I've talked to want to go with decorative signs. So I'm asking that whatever the city would spend, should we decide to go with a city sign, if you would just give that credit towards our expense to change those signs, that would decrease our costs. And then I talked about the stoplights in the past, if you go south on Allisonville Road, stacking lanes, if you make a left on 116th Street coming south on Allisonville, is a hazard. And before I, I meant to do this before I started. I represent 298 homes in River Glen, and I want the people who are here in River Glen tonight, please stand and get an idea of how many folks came out tonight. These are some of my board members, some of my committee members, and just some of the committee members. We have a very active community, have a very active board, and quite frankly, we're feeling the glass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak? Step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Denise Webster, again.
Again.
I am a proud resident of River Glen, which I think is a very, very beautiful community here in Fishers, and I'm actually going to quote what Councilman George said while we were talking about the budget, is, "You must reinvest." And as Brad said, you have to, you can't keep kicking it down the road. That's what's going on in West Fishers. And if it's not addressed, we're going to have one part of Fishers that's been reinvested, economic development, all shiny, and we're going to have a barrier. We're going to have a wall. We're going to have the haves and the have-nots. And that is not why I moved here four years ago. It is not why I invest in my community and my development and work hard to keep River Glen as beautiful as it is. I have called the mayor's office four times with no phone call returned. That upsets me. There's got to be some type of public relations officer, or somewhere you can go. But you have, you can't stop, you can't kick it down the road, as you said, Mr. George, as you said. You have to reinvest in this entire community. The nipple plate is gorgeous. The municipal complex is gorgeous. IKEA, I'm in, I have more friends now that come out of town because we have IKEA. I wad you for all of that, but I am here to make sure that you keep the West Fishers, the Fishers that started 25 years ago, as you said, the jewel that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, with that, I'll close the community comment section. Anybody wish to, any comments?
Make a quick comment about some of those statements made. It does not go unnoticed to us that there are some challenges at 116th and Allisonville. It's something that my economic development team and myself take very seriously. Some of this is a function of timing. I don't think any of us foresaw the Kroger deciding not to invest and put the new building on the other side of the road, which put some of our plans frankly on ice. We are now rethinking, restrategizing what we can do to redevelop that portion of our community. We stand committed to seeing all corners of Fishers be vibrant. In the world of economic development, sometimes it's a function of timing, when landowners are willing to sell and when they're willing to redevelop. We're in active discussions with people in that intersection to see what we can accomplish, and we look forward to bringing about a more vibrant and dynamic area at 116th and Allisonville. It just hasn't happened at the pace that I think any of us would like to see. But nonetheless, without divulging confidential economic development conversations, we are, we are out there actively trying to get something accomplished. And as for someone not calling you back, that's unacceptable, and I'll follow up with you after the meeting to find out about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments or questions from council?
Just a personal comment. I've only been on the board two and a half years, but I would like to commend the mayor. He has worked on that area for everybody probably more than any other part of the city. In fact, I have to remind him sometimes that Britton Falls is on the other side of the city, so I guess I'm defending him, but I just want you to know, he is spending a tremendous amount. He understands the broken window concept, and if we don't fix the broken window, what can happen, as a lady said, and he's working on it, but you can't force somebody to sell their land or eminent domain or things like that. But he spends an awful lot of time on that project, which he keeps all of us informed, and we get excited, and then things fall through. So I just wanted to let you know what we are sharing with that part of the city.
We're all so very cognizant as a council. We, I drive by there every day, almost, and I'm like, okay, what are we doing, what are we doing? So we are, we all are working together, and I'm sorry, sometimes some of this takes a little bit of patience, but believe me, we are, we are working on it, and we, we're, as a council, we're all so cognizant of that.
I want to say thank you to the residents of River Glen for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns with us. I think it is good that you come in, that you share those with us. It's great. I can come in here and I can share them, but hearing from you is very important for us, and the comments that you have shared tonight are ones that I've heard numerous times from nearby residents at 116th and Allisonville. However, I do want to tell you, I have heard from the mayor's office and from fellow councilors, that we are working on the issue, but as the mayor stated, it is a timing issue, and we will continue to work on it. So thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Oh, second. Pass, yeah. Second. All in favor to adjourn?